Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Thursday, April 4th. And our agenda for tonight is to approve some minutes. Then we will hear, we have hearings on National Grid grants of location on Fearing and Miles Road, Manatee Road, Burdette Avenue, and Downer Avenue. Then we will hear from Roger Fernandez, our Town Engineer, an update on some paving and road-related issues. And then we will be discussing the four articles related on, that are on the town meeting warrant, related to the building of the high school fields. And following Town Administrator and Selectmen reports, after that, we will be adjourning to an executive session, not to return to open session. So with that said, are we ready to approve the minutes of March 26th?
I'm okay.
Yeah?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of March 26th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to National Grid. There you are, Mr. Regan, welcome. Good evening.
My name is Dennis Regan, and I'm the Permit Representative for National Grid. And the first petition tonight is for Fearing. So National Grid hereby respectfully request your consent to install and maintain approximately 2,065 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Fearing Road, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main in Main in Burdette Ave, southerly to the existing four-inch gas main in Fearing Road at North Street, and approximately 725 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Miles Road, from the proposed four-inch gas main in Fearing Road, westerly to the existing two-inch gas main at Lincoln Street, all of which to replace and abandon the existing three-inch gas main in Fearing Road and the existing inch-and-a-half gas main in Miles Road.
Miles, Fearing. Okay, I got it.
Two sheets.
Yes. Trying to get the geography. Okay. Any comments or questions?
When do you plan starting, Dennis?
As soon as possible.
Are you repairing, or this is no?
This is, we're relaying the existing gas mains.
Okay. Are there leaks now, or is it just old?
Well, when they were, when they were installed, there was, they were not, it was bare steel, which causes it to rot a lot faster than what we use today, and that's why we want to, we replace it. And there's also leak surveys down in certain sections that can cause issues also.
You going into North Street at all?
It looks like we're not going in because there's an existing four-inch gas, if you look at the map on the front page, okay, you see where North Street and Fearing, I see that existing four-inch gas main that's, that's in Fearing, they're going to connect to that.
Okay, that's why I asked. I didn't know if you were going into North or not.
That's just, just the, where the red dashes are, that's where we're going.
And how long will it take? Assuming-
Maybe a month.
Really? Wow.
Anywhere from 120 to 160 feet a day, and maybe more sometimes, depending on what they're digging through.
Okay.
Roger, Harry, have any concerns?
Good evening.
This gas main on Fearing, as well as the ones that are going to be applied for on Burdette and Miles Road. Gas mains we've urged to get replaced are close to 100 years old, and that will mean that all the gas main up behind the post office, all on cartage, ship, Fearing, Burdette, and Miles will all be replaced. That neighborhood's on the reconstruction list for 2014, so we're encouraging them to get it done in good order so that it'll be ready for reconstruction.
Great. Anything else? No, I'm good.
I'm all set.
Any comments from the public or questions about this proposal? Okay.
I get to read the first one?
You get to read the one.
Oh, my God.
I'll get the next one.
Yeah, I hope I do as well as you did. I move that we approve the requests from National Grid for a grant of location to install and maintain approximately 2,065 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Fearing Road, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main in Burdette Ave, southerly to the existing four-inch gas main in Fearing Road at North Street, and approximately 725 feet more or less of two-inch gas main at Lincoln Street, all of which to replace and abandon the existing three-inch gas main in Fearing Road and the existing one-and-a-half-inch gas main in Miles Road. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated February 20th, 2013.
Okay. I'm sorry, I should have asked this, Dennis. Is the intent to take the old pipe out? You're going to leave it in place? You're going to abandon it in place? Okay. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Moving on, this is the project that connects with that one, right? Burdette and Otis?
Number two is Manatee Road.
Oh, oh, Manatee, oh, wow.
National Grid hereby respectfully request your consent to install and maintain approximately 365 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Manatee Road, Hingham, from the proposed two-inch gas main at the Hingham-Wamuth Town Line, easterly to the end of the main at House Number 92, all of which to replace and abandon the existing two-inch gas main in Manatee Road.
Okay. So what happens when you get to the Wamuth line? Working on the whole street?
We're going to be connecting, and we're going to be putting Main and Wamuth also.
Okay.
If I may interject here, this main has already been placed in the ground. Gas company originally thought they were just replacing all the gas main in Wamuth, and they happened to go into Hingham.
Oops.
So after the fact, I was informed that, you know, they were up there, and by the time I get up there, they had put the 365 feet already in the ground at Hingham. So this is a grant of location after the fact. So they did Wamuth, went into Hingham, and there's a gap in the main before it picks up again on Manatee Road, so that's all complete.
Okay.
Any lawyers in the room? I assume it went well.
Well, actually, it wasn't going so well, that's why I got a call. But once, you know, I responded and notified the gas company and my issues, they cleaned it up in no time at all, and things have gone well since then.
Well, that's good to hear.
That's good.
Is it normal process to leave and abandon old lines in rather than dig them up?
Yes.
That was a curiosity question more than anything.
You might, you might want to chat-
It's been brought up here before.
Yes, we have had many hours of discussion about this, in fact, and but you might want to ask, Harry-
I'll see you guys later.
For the whole story.
We really want to know, does it come out of the break base? That's the real question.
I'll tell you what, I always, I'm hanging out at the DPW a lot. I'll see you two later.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Okay, I withdraw the question right now.
Mr. Regan, you know, we took so much grief the last time a road was opened before the hearing. Have you had any interactions with the people living on Manatee relative to this?
I have not.
Okay. So from your point of view, everything seemed to go well after Harry got things straightened out?
Well, I didn't find out until everything was all done also. And I found out from Harry when I dropped off these petitions.
Surprise.
I dropped off everything to Harry before you guys get it.
Yeah.
To make sure that he has all our information, and that's when I found out that nobody, after brain to your office, had informed me.
That main of that neighborhood was, you know, 90 years old and had an extensive leak history, so I think the residents up there were very appreciative of it being replaced.
Okay. Okay, any comments or questions? Yes, sir?
Yes.
Could you just step up to the microphone, so people at home can hear you?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Larkin, I'm from homeowners from 40 and I'm at E Road, and I might have been one of the gentlemen that called your office, I don't know how many phone calls that they had received, but my concerns are, one, one of my questions were just answered as far as I was, wasn't unsure of this notice where we, the work had already, had begun and finished back in the fall, and now I'm receiving a notice months later. My main concern is just the integrity of the finished work that was done. The asphalt that was put down is looped, excuse me, not very good in public. The asphalt that was put down for the patch, I had called after the completion of the job and had complained about it because just it was deteriorating literally a month afterwards. I believe they did it in the rain, it wasn't really done, it was a rush job. They came back to put down some new material in front of my house and as well as some other spots on the street. And now, I think we're about four months later, it's still, you know, it's starting to break down. I'm still, I've been sweeping, you know, asphalt from the, from my property all the way up into my house for months now. You know, I worked very hard at keeping my property, you know, nice and clean, but the asphalt is starting to loosen and come up. I do work for municipality, I've never, this type of material and the quality of workmanship and, you know, after it being completed, it's just not, something that I don't really see that often. I don't know whether it was a poor material, but after complaining the first time and, you know, I've been sending out a accrual which was a subcontract, which was, I believe, Riley Brothers is who I contacted, a representative from them that was in charge of their, you know, the after, the paving, after utilities were laid and backfilled. You know, a very nice gentleman came back out, did it in a timely manner, but, you know, like I said, my, my concerns are is the integrity, you know, this is only four months later, and the asphalt is coming up. I know it's been a winter and we've had plowing, but it, the breaking down started before we had, you know, snowfall and plows and sand and all that. But as far as any other concerns, you know, there was really nothing else. It was completed and done, what's done is done, but my concerns are, like I said, the integrity of the patch work for the new gas main was put in.
Well, thank you. This has been a, the kind of work that gets done in situations like this has been a matter of deep and long discussion between us and National Grid over the last few years. And Harry, I wonder if you could, this is Harry Sylvester from the Department of Public Works, and he's in charge of making sure that National Grid does what it's supposed to do, so I wonder if you have any comments? Have you been up there and seen?
I haven't been up there recently, no, but there's two other trenches in town that they have to come back and, they're going to mill them out and put another top course of asphalt on it. Prior to, you know, the weather getting a little warmer, they run into the same problem of the mix being cold and pop on rather quickly, so we want a job that's done, you know, hold up permanently.
Exactly, and that's, that's my main concern. Like I said, the job is already completed, it was completed in a timely manner, there was a little bit of disruption for, you know, the street at the time with the, with the workers, but like I said, it's already completed, and my main concern is that, you know, six months, a year from now, that there is actually areas of the street that it's, you know, chewed up, and there's, there's little potholes. We're not talking sinkholes, but potholes, and just so that the town is aware of that this was completed, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it wasn't really completed.
Thank you. Would this be one of the spots where they will come and-
Yeah, absolutely.
They're going to redo it?
They'll clean it up, sweep it up, roll it in good shape, and they'll, when they're done.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so are we ready to make a motion?
He gets to read this one.
When will it be done, Harry?
Well, the asphalt plants are really just starting to open up. When the weather turns a little warmer probably within the next couple of weeks, I'd expect to see crews start out, you know, start repairing these trenches. Turkey Hill, Leaven Street's one of them, and Smith Road, and now Manatee Road will be on the list.
By the end of the month? Would that be a reason?
Oh, yeah, I would think so, yes.
Is that satisfactory?
Just as long as it's done, it'll be satisfactory to me, that's all.
Assuming Mother Nature doesn't intervene.
That's right.
And they do a list of about 30, 30 reopenings that they have already, you know, sent them, so they have a long repair list, that they'll be in town for a while.
Okay, all right, then I'll make the motion to approve the request from National Grid for a grant of location to install and maintain approximately 365 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Manatee Road, Hingham, from the proposed two-inch gas main at the Hingham-Wamuth Town Line, easterly to the end of the main at House Number 92, all of which is to replace and abandon the existing two-inch gas main in Manatee Road. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including the letter dated January 30th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
National Grid respectfully request your consent to install and maintain 1,960 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Burdette Ave, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main at Lincoln Street, northerly to the existing three-inch gas main at Otis Street, and approximately 350 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Academy Lane, from the proposed four-inch gas main in Burdette Ave, easterly to the end of the main, all of which to replace and abandon the existing three-inch gas main in Burdette and the existing inch-and-a-half gas main in Academy Lane.
You get to read that one.
I was, I was looking for pointers from you.
Okay, any comments or questions?
This justice, you're going to be busy in that neighborhood. That's, you'll be busy in that neighborhood, is what it looks like.
Do I assume all of these roads are not on the five-year moratorium?
Burdette, Miles, Fearing, Cottage, and Ship are all scheduled for reconstruction in 2014.
Good timing.
And we are waiting for a possible sewer main being put up there, so depending on that scheduling, we'll be depending on if we can, you know, hold true to our schedule or not.
Yes, sir. Okay.
No, that's a fine, good question, Arm.
Any comments or questions from the public about the proposal to replace the gas main in Burdette Avenue? Mr. Davenport?
Yes.
Could you, could you come up and speak to the, into the microphone, please?
I have a question.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
They can't hear you.
The people at home get upset when they can't hear the people who are speaking.
It doesn't, it's not a serious matter, but-
Could you, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself for the folks at home? I'm sorry.
John Davenport, 63 Burdette Avenue.
Thank you.
This is not Academy Lane, it's misidentified on the, the property over here is Academy Lane, it doesn't matter, but I'm, just a point of information. But who are, I'm at the corner of the street that you're putting, this off-Burdette Avenue, mislabeled Academy Lane. I'm at the corner of that and Burdette Avenue, and our line comes in from Burdette Avenue, and so does the Lincoln's on the other side.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm curious as to, who is served by this line going up, mislabeled as Academy Lane?
I don't have that information with me, but if this was not going to serve any additional line, we wouldn't be relaying it.
Would it be the Middletons at 61?
Well, maybe it's the, maybe it's the Middletons.
It looks like it stops right at their house.
Oh, okay, I guess that is it. Well, my only question is, what is going to happen to the street? Maybe you've, the legal status of that street, I'm not sure about, it's not a town way. I think, the only reason I know that is that we have to sign releases every time for the, for the town to plow it. So it's, I think it's, I think it's owned and common by the Butters, but I'm not sure about that. And I don't know that it makes any difference, but I'm just wondering, does that have any impact on what happens?
Mr. Sylvester holds us to very high standards of restoration, and we will heed to those the same we do on public roads as do our own.
Oh, okay. So that, so that whatever, will there be a big tar over strip where you dig in, or what?
The trench is about 15, the trench we put in for installation is about 15 inches in width.
Oh, okay.
And it's about three feet deep.
Oh, all right, so there's not major-
And I just, they just try to, we try to install that as close as to the old main as possible, so when we reconnect your existing service, it will happen very quickly.
Okay. All right, well, that was the only questions I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's probably fair to assume, however, that if it's a private way, it won't be being repaved at the same time as Burdette Avenue will be on 2014, so you might want to start, get together with your neighbors and start thinking about that, whether, whether you would like to have that done or not.
Have the lane repaved, you said?
Well, it's going to have this big trench in it, and you might find it a good idea to think about repaving it, if you'd like it to be in good condition, because once you cut a trench in it, no matter, we hold, we do hold them to very high standards, but as Roger Fernandez keeps telling me, and Harry, once you cut a road, it's never the same. And so you might want to think about that. Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay?
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the request from National Grid for a grant of location to install and maintain approximately 1,960 feet more or less of the four-inch gas main in Burdette Avenue, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main at Lincoln Street, northerly to the existing three-inch gas main at Otis Street, and approximately 350 feet more or less of two-inch gas main in Academy Lane, from the proposed four-inch gas main in Burdette Avenue, easterly to the end of the main, all of which is to replace and abandon the existing three-inch gas main in Burdette Avenue and the existing one-and-a-half inch gas main in Academy Lane. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works, including the letter dated January 30th, 2013.
Second.
All in favor?
Just change that, because it's not Academy Lane, that's the problem.
What is it?
It's off-Burdette Avenue, Academy Lane is the one between, the next street over, it's on its back.
Does it have a name?
That's Academy Lane. What it's labeled as Academy Lane here, it doesn't have, the street doesn't have it, it's called-
That's just, that's just Burdette, yeah.
Yes, off-Burdette.
Massated.
We're only going up to-
So that's just, it should change that.
Do you know what it is, Roger?
John says it doesn't have a name. And indeed, the house numbers that are up that little road are middle, are their Burdette, the address is Burdette Ave for these houses up here. It's just a driveway off Burdette, really, private, private drive.
Well, you could just remove the words, Academy Lane, but off-Burdette Avenue, I think.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Remove Academy Lane.
Remove Academy, and say off-Burdette Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, I'll amend the motion that way.
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now-
One more.
Last one.
National Grid respectfully requests your consent to install and maintain 2,975 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Downer Ave, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main at Lincoln Street, northerly to the existing two-inch gas main at Otis Street and Daly Road, all of which to replace and abandon the existing three-inch gas main in Downer Ave.
Okay. So, and it goes all the way to Otis Street, but no further, right? Goes to Otis Street, but no further.
There's already been approval for Downer Ave that extends a little farther than that, up to like Cushing Ave, but I think there's one little piece that's going to jump, and then it's going to pick up again, up to Cushing Ave. We approved that last, I think, summer and a half ago.
Ah, okay. Okay, that answers my question.
But they didn't go forward, it's because of the extension they wanted to add on to that project.
Uh-huh. Okay.
With the couple projects that involve Downer Ave and whatever, how much of Crow Point is now provided with gas?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I don't have any-
Looks like quite a bit. Roger, do you know, Harry?
Most of Crow Point does have gas. There are a couple of sections, I know the end of Jabba's Ave doesn't have gas, I'm not sure of all of them, I'd have to do a little more research, and they've replaced probably 40% of that gas main at this point in time, so there's still 60% more to go. I'd say roughly another 8,000 feet anyway that they'd have to replace.
It's quite a bit, though.
That's it.
And to the question, Arm, I asked earlier, when are those streets scheduled to be done?
Let's see, 2016, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, good.
All right, so we got time.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any public question or comment on this particular gas main replacement in Downer Ave? Nope? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the request from National Grid for a grant of location to install and maintain approximately 2,975 feet more or less of four-inch gas main in Downer Ave, Hingham, from the existing two-inch gas main at Lincoln Street, northerly to the existing two-inch gas main at Otis Street and Daly Road, all of which is to replace and abandon the existing three-inch gas main in Downer Ave. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated January 30th, 2013.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Regan. Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us next to our update for the Town Engineer on our paving and related contracts.
Can you bring the laptop over here?
No, it's all set to go. Good evening, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, my name is Roger Fernandez, Town Engineer. And in your packet, you should have, I'm not sure which one's first on the agenda, is it the paving, did you say?
Paving and road-related contracts.
So in your agenda-
So I guess the road construction updates after that.
Okay. So in front of you, you should have a memo, and in that memo, there are two totals, two separate contracts. One is for micro-surfacing and random crack sealing, and the other is for hot-mix asphalt production and pavement installation. These are two contracts that we utilize annually, as you might imagine, during our road construction schedule, and we received with respect to the micro-surfacing contract, three separate bids. The low bidder was Seal Coating, Inc., and based on our estimated quantities projected for construction season 2013, we anticipate a grand total of $444,000, $444,345 of work with the Micro-Surfacing, Inc. The contract itself is unit-based, meaning it's contingent upon the amount of quantity that we actually utilize. We did receive, and right now they're the apparent low bidder, we did receive two additional bids, the second from New York by Tuminus for $508,952, and the third from Superior Seal Coating, Inc. for $482,040. So again, Seal Coating, Inc. was the low bidder. We've worked with Seal Coating, Inc. successfully in the past, and we have, we have not had an issue with the quality of their work or their representation whatsoever. So with that, I would, I would recommend that the Selectmen enter into contracting with Seal Coating, Inc. for a one-year contract, and any extensions that are spelled out within the contract themselves, we would come before you again and request those extensions, the approval for those extensions themselves. Second contract, do you want, do you want to talk about that contract first, or do you want me to go into the next one?
Why don't you go through the second one if you have questions?
Okay. The second contract is with T.L. Edwards. T.L. Edwards, again, based on our estimated quantities, bid $793,275, and we received two other bids. Bear with me a second. I think I have it here. Here it is, yeah. One from Agreed Industries. Agreed Industries bid $857,680, and another from U.S. Paving Services, and their bid So again, the apparent low bidder, T.L. Edwards, we've worked with T.L. Edwards before in the past. Last year, Agreed Industries actually had the contract. Both companies we've worked with successfully, and we don't anticipate any issues with either contract.
Okay, great.
Okay, no?
Comments?
No?
One curiosity question. For both of these bids, when all is said and done at the end of the year, are you over or under your estimate?
We're usually pretty close. What we do is we, we, based on our five-year plan and one-year plan, we're able to determine what we project for that upcoming year, so with that, we're usually pretty close. I think last year, we were actually within $20,000 of our, of our projected estimate. I think last year, we were actually within twenty thousand dollars of our projected estimate.
Thanks.
Irma raised a thought. Is the cost of, are the costs increasing more rapidly, or, I say, over five percent year-over-year, or?
Yep, and we'll talk about that in the presentation a little bit, but there's, one of the issues we struggle with is there's a tremendous amount of volatility in the cost associated with doing this work. And when I say tremendous, I don't think I'm overstating. It's difficult from year to year to determine where we're going to be, and one of those issues that we struggle with is it's a requirement to put an escalation clause in these contracts. That requirement comes from the state as a precursor to the Chapter Ninety funding that we get. So literally, it's a month-to-month change, potentially month-to-month change in the asphalt price, the liquid asphalt price, and we have to reference that, and the corresponding payment is contingent upon where that price falls. Yeah.
And there is a, you know, a benefit to having your estimates be fairly accurate. It creates a more competitive bid on the contractors. They know exactly what they're bidding on. So we've done pretty well on our estimates.
So for the year we have the contract, they can't change the price, or you, that escalator is in there to allow them, if their provider escalates, because it's all around the petroleum, right?
That's correct. So it does allow them to escalate from month to month. So what happens is if we reference, they automatically supply us with an invoice that states the escalation or de-escalation, as the case may be. We then reference this website provided by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, make sure that that escalation is correctly represented in their invoicing, and, but in large part, it has not gone in the right direction. It isn't directly tied into.
Price of oil.
Price of gasoline, so when you see the price of gasoline go up, there's a cost associated with that in the paving itself that deals with transportation, but it goes, it's more than that. It's the ability to refine the material better, so that there's less and less of the stuff at the bottom of the barrel, which is the asphalt. It's the issues, it's the issue that we struggle with, with things that are happening overseas. Where is the bytuminum going? Is it going to China, or is it going elsewhere? That happened with the cement products and steel prices. That's kind of come down a little bit. So there's a lot of other impacts associated with the asphalt. And when I say asphalt, I mean literally the liquid asphalt is the component that really is difficult to get a grasp of.
Thanks.
No problem.
Okay. Shall we entertain a motion?
Sure.
Two of them?
I'll do both of them then, if that's okay. I'll make a motion first, that we enter into a one-year construction and materials contract through December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, with Seal Coating, Incorporated, eight twenty-five Granite Street, Braintree, Massachusetts, for four hundred and forty-four thousand, three forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make another motion to enter into a one-year contract, one-year construction and materials contract through December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, with T.L. Edwards, Incorporated, one hundred Wales Avenue, Avon, Massachusetts, for seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very much.
Okay.
And now I understand you're going to treat us to an update on our road construction plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have one more vote?
That's coming up after now.
After that, you can do that afterward. Okay.
Now we delve into the exciting world of infrastructure. I will do my best to try and.
Slideshow and everything, Roger?
Only the best for you guys. That's a good start. Did you see that, or is it?
Yeah, could you just maybe dim the lights a little bit?
Yeah.
Make it easier for everybody in the room.
Actually, now what you gotta do is turn that off and turn the other lights on.
The switch at the bottom, the white one, Roger?
There you go.
There we go. Great.
Can you see that, Bob?
That's good, thank you.
Yep. This is good. Yes, it is.
Yep.
Okay, so just a pretty quick presentation, I think, dealing with our roadway infrastructure. And in order to go forward, I'd like to provide a little bit of history. So in two thousand and ten, the Board of Selectmen called for a comprehensive evaluation of our town roads, you might recall that. And we reported back with the following cost conditions, condition assessment and plan. At that time, I had come before you, prior to that, and as with most municipalities, I think, and even at the federal and state level, we had set off the alarm that we were falling behind. And you guys basically told me, "That's great, Roger, tell me what the problem is," and that's kind of where we ended up. So, so at that time, again, we looked at a twenty-five-year investment plan to bring the roads to a higher standard. And in the way we did that, in the chart to the right, here, we did that, is we actually took every segment of road in the town of Hingham, and we assigned a value to that, a quality level, if you will. And that quality level represented, represented here, one, two, three, four, excellent, good, fair, poor, and failure, also corresponded with a dollar value. So we know if the road is excellent, we don't have to worry about spending any money on it today. And if the road is in failure, we know that that cost is somewhere around sixty dollars a square yard. So if we know how long the roads are, we know how wide they are, we can figure out the area, and we can get a pretty good, you know, I don't want to overstate the specificity of that, but we get a, we get a pretty good idea as to what we're dealing with in terms of cost. So you see represented in the chart, the actual cost for these potential locations, and then the percentage of which are good, poor, bad, failure, and, and again, the cost associated with that. So with that, the twenty-five-year plan, and we'll talk about why twenty-five-year plan, we came up with an annual cost implication. So to maintain the current conditions of the road, we were looking at a one-point-one million dollar investment annually. To improve the current conditions of the road, we were looking at a one-point-three million dollar invested, investment annually. And keep in mind, at that time, in order to maintain the current roadway infrastructure condition, an annual infusion of three hundred thousand dollars would be necessary, based on available funding at FY eleven. So this presentation, again, is a look back, and that's where we were then. So we did the same thing over again, and we took a look at two thousand and twelve. And when I say we took a look at the year, we took a look at the beginning of the year. So this is not at the end of two thousand and twelve, this is at the beginning. So this is where we started with that evaluation. These are the numbers we were left with. At the end of that construction season, again, at the beginning of two thousand and twelve, we saw these values. So the excellent roads went from eleven to fifteen point five, the good roads went from four point two, forty-two point four to forty point five, and so on and so forth. Now, you'll note that there were, you know, there was some change, some movement in the values from good to excellent, but they weren't monumental. Well, they weren't supposed to be monumental. You weren't paying for monumental just yet.
I remember that.
And, and this is a twenty-five-year plan, not a, not a two-year plan. So we, these numbers didn't surprise us. We haven't really seen the investment come forward in terms of a true, you know, true improvement. But this is where we want to be. This is what we want to fix, in a maintain it first approach. And we've talked about this a little bit, but it's, it's difficult to explain to some people why you don't necessarily fix the worst road first. And the reason is because of, because of the funding that's available, you end up spending all the money to fix that road, while the roads that are in good and fair condition slip away and quickly fall into poor and failure. So by doing this, we're able to defer reconstruction, and you'll see a graph that reflects that shortly. But some of the stuff we need, we need away, when we talk about funding and moving forward with this, is, of course, one, the funding needs, the funding mechanisms. Two, how do we manage the work levels? So if the board today said to me, "Roger, I'm gonna give you five million dollars a year to do the roads," I'm gonna say to you, "How am I gonna work that? How am I gonna manage that with the people that we have in place now?" And that's a reflection of not only being able to issue contracts, deal with the permitting, but also maintain the quality that we want to maintain when you're spending this kind of money. And then, and the other thing to consider is obviously the work implications on the community. People struggle naturally with road closures and detours, and when you leave a detour to hit another detour based on a really high value appropriation for road construction, because you're closing multiple roads at once, that might not be palatable to your constituents. So that's something else we have to consider. So right now, I look ahead, in season two thousand and thirteen, we anticipate performing an additional one-point-four million, one-point-zero-four million dollars' worth of roadwork. And that's gonna be somewhat contingent, and I'll, and I'll talk about that momentarily. So for funding, these are our two primary sources, these are our only two sources, and that is Chapter Ninety funding. In that, in addition to that, we receive our town-funded program. In the Chapter Ninety funding, we've seen it stay pretty much the same, despite what you might hear from, from our legislators, through two thousand and eleven. There was a bump in two thousand and twelve and a bump in two thousand and thirteen, which was not, is not necessarily reflected in the pavement conditions that we talked about earlier. So now we're working with additional money. By that, I mean, we indicated a shortfall of three hundred thousand dollars here, and now we've got an additional almost two hundred thousand dollars to work with. So that's a good thing. So now we have the money that we need to maybe catch up and move ahead a little bit. And the Board of Selectmen also had decided that this wasn't important in two thousand and ten, and they've incrementally increased the town end of the funding by about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and here we're in two thousand and thirteen, we're projecting two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in funding by the town. With respect to the Chapter Ninety appropriation, this is where it gets a little complicated. We're presenting to you a list that says, "We plan on doing these roads." Last year, this money did not become available until October, and we do not rip up roads and start for that projects or micro-surface in October. So what we do is we carry over a certain amount of Chapter Ninety and a certain amount of road building, so that when April comes about, we're hitting the ground running. We're not waiting for some, some money. So we're in a position to start work. It's advantageous for a couple of reasons. One is it gets done sooner, and the other puts us ahead of the curve with respect to getting contractors in, they're ready to work for us first. If what happened last year happens this year, we will not undertake the list that I will present shortly for construction season two thousand and thirteen. Actually, I spoke with the folks at the district today, we talked about this extensively. When you receive, when we receive a quote-unquote commitment letter for Chapter Ninety, Mr. Alexias receives that from, from, from the folks at Mass DOT, it's a projection. It needs to be voted on by our legislators, and then somebody needs to come up with the money. And that funding sometimes does not take place very expeditiously. So sometimes we're left waiting quite a while. So again, the big maybe is whether or not that money actually becomes available at the end of, sometime in two thousand and thirteen. I talked about deferred maintenance, I'm sorry, deferred reconstruction and the effects of deferring maintenance. So when you defer maintenance, that's a bad thing. You want to defer reconstruction. And so it's always less expensive to maintain and defer reconstruction than it is to reconstruct a road when it gets to this position. So the, so what you see here, it's difficult to see, but it's a drop-off in the qual, in the quality of the road. It's a, it's, it puts you in a position where you're spending more money here than you are here. This cost is about sixty dollars a square yard, where a peer, you're at about nine or ten dollars a square yard in terms of maintenance. And you end up with something like this, where the quality of the road actually extends the life of the pavement, and you continue to do that at, at the, before the curve drops off, and you continue to defer reconstruction. And I, and I put this up here, just, just to give you a sense. So the town has a hundred and ten miles of roadway with an asset value of a hundred and twenty-two million dollars. You've seen that. But when you consider the percentage that we fund back into this infrastructure, into a hundred and twenty-two million dollars, we're not at a one percent. We're not even there yet. So as you might imagine, it's difficult to maintain anything at one percent its, its asset value. And here, just another fact statement, for every dollar spent on preventive maintenance treatment, it saves up to ten dollars in future rehabilitation costs. And Mrs. Lauder had asked the question, "What's happening to asphalt?" Well, this is not good. I tell people pretty regularly, you know, "Where's the money going? Why, what's happening?" And, you know, here in Janu, June of two thousand and five, you could almost build twice as many roads as you could today. That's, that's how bad it is. And so we're dealing with the, and with respect to the question of how hot-mix asphalt represents in petroleum properties, represent other things, well, it represents about thirty-six, it's thirty-six percent dependent on petroleum products, and that primarily deals with transportation. So gas goes up, the cost of the producer goes up, they truck this material in, so that there's a, there's an exponential effect associated with that. And there's always, there's always the increase in work and demand for material and equipment and labor, something we talked about overseas, those demands are something that are tough to project. And of course, of course, the cost of liquid asphalt, and it's, you know, it continues to increase. And this, this graph, it's prepared by Parsons Brinckhoff, it's a consulting firm. It measures the Consumer Price Index, and it only goes up to two thousand and ten. I wasn't able to find one that, that contained two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen, but it doesn't, I don't suspect that the graph would change much in two thousand and eleven and thirteen. So these are just the general construction escalation costs associated with doing highway So how do roads get selected? Well, with available funds, we evaluate the road condition, safety as well as structurally. We balance the cost of reconstruction versus maintenance. We coordinate the need, the pavement resurfacing with other street, water, sewer, and underground utility improvements. I think you witnessed that earlier today, where we try to create some synergy between the utility companies and the work that we're doing, so that when we're done with our work, they're not back there ripping up the road to, to repair their infrastructure. And, and over the past couple of years, we've had a real successful relationship with those So we consider the, the number of vehicles utilized and the proposed section of roadway, and construction scheduling and location coordination by targeting, targeting an area of town for construction. So, you know, there's always an efficiency in, in, in not jumping from one street to the other street, to another street, all over the town of Hingham. So, and I'll, and I'll illustrate that a little, a little bit later on. And, and, and the budget does get refined based on a, a funding, you know, what might be available for funding. So in here, we're, you know, we're at a twenty-five-year plan, and then we develop our five-year plan, then we start to understand what our legislators and our town government is willing to do in terms of road infrastructure, and we continue to refine what we're going to do in terms of roadwork, and of course, we develop at the end of that our final cost. So here's a list of the roads, again, we're planning to do in two thousand and thirteen. The, you know, again, contingent upon what happens with, at the state level and the projected funding. This list will be available on the town website, along with this one, that is, that includes the other four years in our five-year plan. We're also, we're gonna provide, it's there now, but we're providing some additional information on the town website, which illustrates the, which illustrates the five-year road construction plan on a GIS map. And here, you can see a section of town, the Liberty Pole area that we're, we're targeting. In it, you'll find a color-coordinated map that'll tell you the year of the proposed construction and, and the location, and the limits of the work. Not every road gets constructed to its full length, but this map is accurate to that, so that'll provide that, that information. And how will we, how will the residents be notified of impending work? Well, we place our construction schedule on the town website. We hand-deliver notices to every door, and we, with our friends at the local newspaper, we try to get a notice in the newspaper. We make our best, we do our best to try and notify people as best we can, when the work is gonna take place, but as you mentioned, Ms. Lauder, that sometimes it rains, and sometimes the contractor's supposed to be here on a Tuesday, and he doesn't show up until Thursday. You know, we, we continue to, we will continue to update the website and do our best to, to notify the residents, but there are times where things change in terms of construction schedule, so I, so I would hope that they would appreciate that. And that, that sort of ends the presentation.
Thank you very much. Comments?
Sure. If you could get the lights, Roger, so I can see you. Thank you. Ooh, there you are. Thank you. Once again, that was a good update from where we are. You mentioned something at the beginning which concerns me. The state was delayed in sending us money. And now, I don't know the specifics for this town, obviously, but I heard this morning the governor's. And now I don't know the specifics for this town, obviously, but I heard this morning the governor's comments in rebuttal to Speaker DeLeo's proposal for funding. And of course, it hasn't gotten to our level yet. I'm assuming this is all up here when we're trying to literally dig. So the first caution I heard you say is if they don't decide soon, it puts next year's program perhaps in a little bit of jeopardy or delay, perhaps would be the better word. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, what would happen is we would, if a similar approach took place this year, then they would be, and they funded the program in October, then the funding available, that was made available this October would be carried over till next year. And at that point, we would proceed with the work that was left undone next year. So we'd push it all back. It's never, you saw the graphs with the cost escalations from year to year and the price of asphalt goes through. So every year, ostensibly what happens, it gets more expensive to build your roads. I don't want to hold your money. I want to spend it. I want to fix your roads. And, but it puts municipalities at a disadvantage because you're not able to prepare. You don't know when the funding becomes available. And you're really left at their mercy as a result.
And 25% of the money comes from the town, and the other 75% or thereabouts comes from the state. As I'm looking, but it all comes from us.
Yes, yeah.
So you can work with what we have, but you can't work with what you don't have.
No. So what we'll have this year is we'll have, we have about $100,000 left in FY13's road construction budget funded by town. Half of what we had last year. So that is intent to carry over about half, so we can, again, hit the ground running. And we have about $400,000, $420,000 left in the Chapter 90 funding going forward. On July 1st, we'll get an additional $285,000, we hope, and we'll spend half of that. So we're at about $600,000 for this year's construction. We wanted to do a million, a little over a million dollars worth of roadwork if all that, if the Chapter 90 money becomes available. If that doesn't, then, you know, we're reducing our construction plan by about 40%, you know. That's what we're looking at.
So that pushes the 25-year plan out?
Oh, yeah, definitely, most definitely.
So that's, folks should know that so they can write Jamie Murphy and Garrett Bradley and Bob Hedlund. But I see the town administrator has something to add.
In the past, we've explored, but we just haven't been able to do it because of the state's inability to give us finite information about when they would be paying or providing Chapter 90 money, if any, and what amount. But we can issue grant anticipation notes to continue the work during the summer. But, you know, we don't even get notice of this until it's, you know, in the middle of the summer or beyond, as Roger indicated. And, you know, there's no ability for us to step in. Certainly, we would do that because our costs are remarkably lower on interest rates than a year of deferred maintenance. But, you know, we can't, we can't do that if they don't tell us.
Do you have a drop-dead date, Ted, which says I can react if I know by July 1st?
Well, it's generally, you know, middle of June for us to issue those notes. But it would be helpful if we had it by the middle of May because that's when we plan on issuing notes this year.
Well, they wouldn't reimburse that.
No, they wouldn't reimburse the interest cost, but for us.
They wouldn't reimburse the dollar value at all. I mean, the way it would work is that moving forward, if we decided to spend, I asked the same question. At our own peril, at our risk, if we moved forward and we decided, this reimbursement process, are we okay with, are you okay with doing that? Because in that case, I would recommend that. Maybe that's something we consider. But the problem becomes that, the documentation we're required to submit to them includes literally the billing that we receive from the contractors. So any of those bills that have post-dated the actual ledger appropriation, where the money becomes actually available, they will not entertain reimbursing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
A couple of things. Now, I forgot my question, but a comment. Roger, I want to thank you and Harry, your sidekick there. Having gone on Capitol in 2002, where we didn't have a plan, or didn't have a very good plan, and spent all the money fixing the worst roads in the world. Thanks to you, we now have, and your expertise, we now have a capital management plan, part of the asset management of the town, where we're looking at how best to spend the money and get the most bang out of the buck. So I thank you very much. I thank you also for watching the price of asphalt, which used to be a topic at every Capitol meeting where we talked about, and was. Because you almost hated to see that budget come in, especially when we were looking at level funding. So I think you all have done a great job in working with the gas companies and any of the other utilities, and especially the light plant also. I know you work very well with them. So thank you. This is a good plan.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to applaud especially your communication efforts, putting up maps on the website. I feel like that is really valuable for the citizens, and it's helpful to you because you'll get less phone calls asking, when are we gonna, you know, when is my road going to be repaid? And it's helpful to the residents. I think even just knowing that there's a plan, even if your road is not on the list yet, makes everyone feel like it's an organized effort moving towards an outcome that we all understand what it is. And that's a change, as Irma points out, from long ago. And so, but I particularly applaud the public communications aspect of what you're doing. I think that is extremely valuable to everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from anybody out there about our road plan for the future? Okay, well, thank you very much. Now we're on to your last item, which is the Memorial Bell Tower reconstruction contract.
Just a moment, just to bring up this little rendering, to give you an idea of what we're talking about. Are you going to move the camera, Bob? That was a terrible close-up.
Brad Pitt doesn't have to worry?
Yes. No, he does not. For the first time in my career, I'm red in the face, thanks to you. It's never happened before. Never been at a loss for words. But here we go. So today I come before you to, with your approval or authorization, enter into contract with MCI Contracting out of Stoughton, Massachusetts. The value of the contract is $68,000. It is part and parcel to the project. You guys can't probably see this now, so I'm going to have to turn it a little bit. But it revolves around the Hingham Memorial Bell Tower. So I'm going to read a little bit of this verbatim. It might be easier. So the town has approved and appropriated $175,000 from Community Preservation Historic Resources reserves to be used by the Hingham Historical Commission to fund Phase 1 of the Hingham Memorial Bell Tower restoration. The funding is intended to undertake the structural engineering, masonry repair, and building stabilization. This contract will encompass only the work associated with the building stabilization as part of Phase 1. The tower needs to be stabilized in order to repair cracks in the masonry caused by an undampened movement, the undampened movement of the bell carriage at the top of the tower. The project scope will entail the demolition of two existing floors, one floor being concrete, the other wood, and the removal of the existing spiral staircase. The staircase, incidentally, is not part of this contract. The installation of two new concrete floors will be constructed and strategically placed to dampen the building movement in parallel, but under a separate contract, a new spiral staircase will be installed. So what's happening now is these bells, which are very heavy, when the bell rings, who are here, ring the bells, the building actually oscillates and moves. So there are some structural issues associated with that. We engaged a structural engineer to help us figure out what the problem is and how to fix it. And the way to fix it is to relocate the floors within the building themselves. So this is the existing, I'm sorry, this is the proposed condition. Would you mind peeling that back, Harry? Just a picture. So this is the existing condition. This is the proposed new construction condition. So both this floor and this floor are going to be removed and relocated. This floor being wood and this floor being concrete. Those existing floors are going to be relocated within the building. They're both going to be placed in concrete. And those concrete floors are going to make the building more rigid, so that when they ring the bells, it will shake less. The spiral staircase itself that's in the building now will be removed, and a new spiral staircase will be installed. And that spiral staircase will take you from the existing meeting room up to the floor just below the bell fray. So with your approval, we anticipate starting work in six to eight weeks. We have all the requisite statutory documentation from the contractor. I've checked his references. And I got good references back on behalf of the contractor. And we're prepared to do work and move forward as soon as we get the okay.
Great. Okay.
Thank you, Roger. The, I guess the positioning of the floors will give, bring more stability to the building? Is that what I'm hearing you say? And the fact that it's concrete, not wood, obviously
That's right.
will reinforce the sides on the, I won't get into the physics of all this because you'll lose me after I ask the second question. But, and how long will this work take to be done?
I don't think it's more than four to six weeks' worth of work in total.
Sometime this summer it will be done?
Yeah.
Is the building supposed to sway a little bit?
Do you know? I don't know. To be candid, I'm not sure. Buildings are designed to move. I get the sense that you know that already. And a lot of it's contingent upon the footprint of the building, how tall the building is. So in this particular case, I couldn't say definitively whether or not the building is designed to move. I can tell you that the building construction does not like the fact that it moves. It's a masonry-rigid building. And a lot of the buildings you described are designed to flex and understand seismic issues. This building that was built in 1912, I don't think was, that was necessarily considered.
Will the construction and the work change the sound of the bells?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't think so. I know we have other, the bell ringers here could probably speak more, you know, with more expertise on that. I don't, we don't anticipate that that's the case, but it's a good question. I'm not sure.
It was a curiosity question. There was just on, I think it was Chronicle, they had the Carolans from Cohasset. And that was fascinating because their bells don't move, which I didn't know, which our bells do move.
Yeah, some of them do move, yeah.
This is neat. It's going to be neat to see it done.
If I were ringing the bells and the building were moving, I would be very anxious. So I don't know how you're managing to do this. Glad we're going to do this. Thanks to Town Meeting for approving the community preservation funds. Is there parking associated with the bell tower that you know of that belongs to the town? Or is all the parking in that area related to the cemetery or the old ship church? Do you know?
I don't. And I don't think that it's been an issue in any, I mean...
Well, I was just thinking, if you're going to have construction vehicles there,
Oh, I'm sorry.
you're probably going to have to make arrangements.
Yeah. In the contract, the way, generally the way I stipulate that is that we, and we have to provide them with some sort of staging area, but that staging area needs to be pre-approved. And usually I make sure, and I talk with the project proponents about what's going to fit where. So we didn't spell that out, but you're right. There will be a location where we're going to need to store steel. But this, but there's not a whole lot of material on this particular project. And certainly not a lot that will be lying around, or laying around, I should say. There will be contracted vehicles, and we'll have to work with those folks to make sure that they don't interfere with the regular, you know, operations that take place up there.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public about this contract to move forward with this project?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with MCI Contracting Incorporated, 1296 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072, for $68,000 for Phase 1 of the Memorial Hingham Bell Tower Restoration Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Well, looking forward to it. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is discussion of the four school fields-related articles that will be coming for Town Meeting. Wait for two seconds while people get reorganized. Okay. We are coming to the end of a very long public process in discussing the school fields projects and how the school fields should be rebuilt, since we all agree that they should be rebuilt. And we have four articles before us. The process of coming up with a school committee proposal involved almost 30 public meetings with lots and lots of opportunity for public input. The advisory committee has already made recommendations on all four of these articles. So we'll mention that when we get to the, get to that point. And so I think we'll, we have not yet made our recommendation as a group. So we'll, I think we ought to begin with the petition article, which offers an alternative to the school committee proposal, which is covered by the other three articles. And the purpose of the petition article was to present a slightly different vision and hopefully a lower cost for the project. And the petitioner is here today. And I don't know if, or the lead petitioner, I don't know if you have anything to add, or, no, okay. So I will just open it up to my colleagues for your comments. And then we'll see if anybody else has any comments.
No, go ahead. No, no, you can go. Yep.
Do you want to say what the advisory committee did?
Certainly. I don't know if I, I wonder if I should read the article. I don't, I don't know. Maybe not. We have had a lot of public comment about this. The advisory committee recommended that Town Meeting take no action on this article.
And the vote was?
I don't know. Is there anybody here from the advisory committee? Perhaps 10 to 3.
No, it was 9 to 5.
9 to 5.
That's right. You're right, Ray. There was only 13 votes. The one of the votes that was going to vote against had to leave.
So the vote was 9 to 5?
9 to 4.
9 to 4. Okay.
Okay. I know we all three wrote letters, which I'm sure everybody has. And Beth, I was hoping Ben was going to be here tonight. I think you all have done a good job with beginning to flesh out a Plan B. I have one question for you before I finish my comments. Your original petition article does not contain a number in it. It is just all wording. Do you intend to somehow, is it going to, are you going to speak at Town Meeting? Or how are you going to get a number in this?
Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street. We are waiting for their RFP to come back. We're hoping that when the RFP comes in, that it will be divided as two different parcels because we have not been privileged to the $275,000 that was given to the school committee for their work in putting forward a cost estimate. And we have been using those in order to evaluate what the cost would be for us. So until we have those numbers, we will not have an exact cost, but we will have a number to make a positive motion at Town Meeting, if that is the decision.
I had a long conversation with Ben, and one of the things I expressed to him, I was disappointed that you all didn't come to the Selectmen and ask for a small amount of engineering money. Because I certainly would have wanted to... Because I certainly would have wanted to hear that. And-
We were not aware we were able to do that, so.
Anybody can ask us for money.
Okay.
And they do. So I, I think it would have been, I would have more of a comfort feeling about your numbers versus extrapolating and making untechnical decisions on the numbers you're going to get.
Most of the figures, though, for the drainage and for most of the fields are their numbers. The difference would be subtracting. And what we basically have done with the seeding is do their per-seat cost and cutting it back that way. Looking at their cost for the press box, which is three ti, three and a half times the size of the existing press box. We wanted to make it two times the size, so we have just cost evaluated it that way. Ben has the nice advantage having, being a contractor himself to know how to do some of that. So that's how our numbers come about.
I also don't think you looked at the total cost of ownership of this. Because one of my concerns was, I like the idea of the foldable bleachers, but storing them, taking care of them, because they're going to become a recurring capital cost, more so than permanent bleachers. So I do think, I think you all have done a good job. I think you're maybe six or seven months away from having a very clear picture of an alternative. Let me be clear on one other thing. This does not include a turf field. Correct?
Our numbers when we went to advisory did include a turf field because there was never any evaluation done on a grass field. So we had no way of doing a drainage study because it was never addressed by the school committee.
Is the presumption that the taxpayers pay for the turf field?
Our presumption is still that if you're doing fundraising for the youth and athletes of the town, that that money should go to either project. It is for the youth and the athletes of the town. If it's Town Meeting's decision to come up and decide to go with the lower-cost proposal or whichever proposal they choose, it would be my assumption that whatever money was being raised for the purpose of repairing the athletic facilities at the high school for youth and for the high school athletes, that that money would go to that, either project.
Did you get a commitment from the donors that are willing to put up the money for the turf field that in fact that is true?
No.
Good.
Okay.
I have no comment.
Okay. I, boy, this was a lot of work for you. So I applaud your getting involved and really-
Thank you.
-trying to get where you, where you want to go. I'm myself, am wholly supportive of the process that the school committee and Town Meeting has put together. I feel like it's been lengthy and public and that they've had the opportunity to cover all the bases. And my main concern about this article, as opposed to the other one, would be the, I feel like it would, the numbers are not that different from the school committees and then would really introduce a very large margin of error because of, because of your not having the same resources available. And so I do support the public process that, that we went through. And I feel like enough work has been done by everybody involved and enough public input taken to come up with the right project and with a better knowledge of what it, what it's actually going to cost. So that would be my reason for supporting the, the school committee proposal over this one. So if you don't have any more comments, is there anybody in the room who would like to make some remarks or? Ms. Eldridge?
Lizzy Eldridge, 154 Union Street. At our advisory board, our advisory committee meeting and also, I think, at one of your previous selectmen's meeting, members of the school committee have said that the Town Meeting cannot direct the school board or school committee to do a particular job, that they are an independently elected group. And my question to you is, is that true? Does anybody know if that's true? Because if people vote for the alternative article with the understanding that this is what's going to be done and the school committee says, no, they can take that money and do whatever they want with it, I think that's a problem. And I, I think I need to know, does Town Meeting supersede the school committee's decision? Or who, who has the, the say here?
That was something that was really concerning me, trying to figure that out the last time that we, we were talking about this. Because I think that probably is something we're going to have to have Town Council's opinion on.
Let me, let me share with you what I discovered. There was a letter that was written a couple of years ago by the former Town Council. And his opinion is that the, that the town, under Chapter 71, that the school lands are owned by the town. And there's a phrase in Chapter 71 that says, unless the town otherwise directs. And that's supersede. So Town Meeting decides how the money would be spent. So if they voted for that, the money would be spent that way. If they don't vote for that and they vote for the schools, the school would vote for the school, the school proposal would be authoritative. But that's the expression, unless town otherwise directs. And the council defined town as Town Meeting. Am I correct in that, Mr. Alexio?
Yes, you are. I mean, I think as a general rule, we should follow the practice that we all, I think, intuitively know. Town Meeting is the final authority, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or whether it's the school committee or the advisory committee. Town Meeting is the ultimate authority. If Town Meeting decides something, then I think, you know, you have the practical considerations, but I think you also have the legal considerations too. If someone wanted to bring action against the board, elected or otherwise, there'd be sufficient justification.
To that end, it is my understanding that the school committee is the only entity within the town that is given a budget that can determine how they use their budget, whereas other entities have to account for their budgets. If the proponents, citizens petition won and there was a number attached to it, would they have to follow the regulations within the decision that it would be under 1,000 seats and no lights and whatnot? Or could they choose to use that money like they do with their other budgeting expertise? You had talked about when you, at one of, I think it was the 28th, February 28th meeting, Ted, that when you vote a plan, you're not voting the exact plan. But how would that work as far as the citizens petition, if we put a number on that and the Town Meeting votes for a certain appropriation toward directing this school or, I don't know whether it's directing, but having whoever was to be behind the building contract have it within the regs?
So, I mean, I think with a practical sense, I just don't think the school budget could support funding more money for the fields project. But I think the real question would be, what if they received private funding to accomplish the additional costs that are not included in your, in your proposal? And I think that's where Selectman or Buffalo points out the Chapter 71 provision of the law that Jim Dumey opined on two years ago. But I think it still comes back to a practical consideration. We are, a form of government is run by Town Meeting. That's our ultimate authority. We work very hard to get to Town Meeting. We talk regularly about how we're going to increase participation at Town Meeting. I will tell you that I feel categorically, if you don't follow the wishes of Town Meeting and the votes, you're asking Town Meeting to dissolve itself. I mean, what's the purpose of a Town Meeting if you're not going to follow the votes, whichever way they go?
Thank you. So in that, in that effect, if you're going to now do the next three articles, if Article One of the school committee's fails, does that mean Article Two and Three, or Article Three would fail? Or could they vote Article Three onto our citizens petition article? How does that work?
I'm not sure I follow what you just said.
No, I-
If there, there are two basic field policies. One, the citizens petition, one, the school committee. If, say, the school committee petition loses, they have Section Two and Three on their section, their basic field project. Would Two and Three be null and void? Or would they still, how does that work?
I, I think effectively, well, Two would be. I mean, if you read Two, it's installation of a turf field in connection with Phase Two of all the high school field improvements. So I, I find it hard to believe that the school committee would endorse building a fields project if Article One failed and Article Two passed. Also, I'm a little confused as to how that would happen too. But if that were to happen, in that scenario, I guess, I find it hard pressed to believe that we would follow through with the project. You couldn't just put a turf field in and nothing else. You haven't addressed drainage, you haven't addressed concessions, you haven't addressed anything else. So I do think Two is somewhat tied to One. And then you have, you have the third article, which is the light issue, which is not necessarily tied to the other two.
What if the school petition passes?
The which?
The school petition one.
The petition article.
Yes. And then the turf passes and the lights pass?
Then it's a done deal, right?
So you're saying if Two, Three, and Four pass?
No, you said One, One, Three, and Four.
Yeah, Two, Three, and the petition.
Yeah, okay. So that would mean One would, One would fail, is what you're saying?
But you're, you're basically back to accept your short seating, people.
But would, but my art, Petition Article One states no lights. So that's why I'm asking, what happens? Would you vote if, if School Petition Article One fails? Do you then continue? I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know how it's going to work. So I'm like-
This is one of the subjects that we're going to discuss with the moderator in the run-through because there is some issue about how does the, how does the discussion go with all four articles? Are they simultaneous or are they separate? And I think, you know, some of the discussion is, I think, is pragm, not pragmatically, not pragmatic, because I think it's hard to understand that One, Article One would pass, but Article Four would also pass, or Article One wouldn't pass and then Article Two and Three would. None of that really makes sense.
Well, there, there are votes. That's the reason there's a problem, because there's two-thirds votes required on three of the four articles and one is a majority.
Correct.
So that's, and isn't, the fourth article is not an appropriation. So that compounds the issue. I, I think somebody told me there's 16 different permutations as to how this could be played out.
Well, there's four options.
If we're confused, I can't imagine how the rest of the town would feel. So we need that answer.
I think we need the answer before Town Meeting, so that everybody-
What answer do you want? I don't follow you.
Well, if Article One, let's, let's take it. If Article One passes, Article Two doesn't secure the necessary two thirds, Article Three passes, is that possible?
Wait, what's Article One?
Article One is the petition article.
What are you calling One?
Article One is the petition article.
Okay.
In this order.
Petition.
If the petition article passes and the two-thirds doesn't require an Article Two, and then the turf fields pass in, in the second article, which also requires a two-thirds vote, does, has Town Meeting spoken? And is that a viable option? Meaning you have, their proposal says, I want to do a grass field and a smaller number of seats. Article Two-
Ours says a turf field.
And now it says a turf field.
Yep.
As I understand the language, it's changed.
Okay.
So what happens with all the, with the third article? That's the question.
Well, you know what? I think-
I'm not a lawyer.
Well, I think this is a question for the moderator for the Town Council to, to put their minds to and-
And they are working on it.
Yeah, I don't think we can solve that. Good questions. We don't know the answers yet.
Well, it was the same sort of questions that we had initially with the, and I just was wondering how we were moving forward because people are asking and we need to have some answers to them.
Beth, in your petition article-
Yes.
I don't, is turf field in here? I don't see it.
From my understanding is the-
Here you say a multi-
The wording comes in the commentary section of the article.
But we, we don't vote on that. We vote on the recommended motion, which is no action.
Right, so we would-
Or if you-
If we put a positive motion forward, we have to include that in our positive motion.
So you're saying that when you, if you offer a positive motion, it will have turf fields in it, unlike the article itself?
Yes.
So it will not be the petition article? It will be something else?
Well, the petition article has a no-action vote on it. So the only way to put up, to move forward at Town Meeting, my understanding, was to put a positive motion forward on the floor.
It could be, it could be the article, exactly.
Right.
Okay.
Your exact article.
Okay.
But are you saying it's not going to be?
It's unclear because we don't know how we can put a finance number on a grass field since no study of drainage was ever done for grass field. All their drainage plans, to my best understanding, are based on the capacity for storage of water underneath a turf facility. And nothing was ever done to address the drainage issue in a grass. So I don't know how, for example, their article number, I think it's Article Eight now, can be done because they don't have any studies for grass either. So turf has to be part of their proposal as well. So it gets into that.
It really is.
Who does what when?
And I'll talk about this later, but when you get into it, it is a very difficult package, given all the moving parts. And, you know, I think people have migrated over time. I know the school committee has migrated on the drainage issue. The, the, I'll call it the petition article folks have migrated on the turf issue. And it has been a migration process. And that is not reflected in the articles as currently, as I understand, that are currently written. So that causes the confusion as to what are, what happens if? And that's why I say there's, somebody said to me, 16 different permutations of how this could play out.
Will we see what you are going to put forth as a positive motion before Town Meeting?
Well, I think we, to the best of my knowledge, the best way to do it is to make sure it's a legally votable thing. So someone within Town Council needs to approve it as votable, so.
So if you can provide us with whatever language you're going to do, we'll, you know, we'll make sure Town Council looks at it before Town Meeting.
Thank you.
But I'd also, at least for the three of us-
And for everyone else at Town Meeting.
Maybe I'm a little slow here, but I'd like to see it beforehand so I can read it.
Originally, I was told, originally I was told that I shouldn't put a citizens petition in, I should do it on Town Floor. And the purpose of putting the citizens petition in was so that it would be getting some vetting and being discussed. That was the purpose of pushing it to put this article in initially, before the deadline. So I would like to have the ability to have Town Council look at it because it's, this is a whole new experience for me, for all of us.
I'm sure, I'm sure the moderator would insist on any motion coming forth at Town Meeting being run by Council. I mean, in the past, all amendments have to be run by Council and this is in a way an amendment. So we'll, you know, be drafted.
Is it, is it my understanding that it's correct? In order to have a positive motion forward, you need to put, we need to do-
We need the motion in writing.
You need the motion in writing.
Right now, there is no, right now, there is no positive motion. There's a recommendation of no action by the advisory committee. And that, but a positive motion supersedes a negative motion. So if you have an affirmative motion, that gets precedent as to the motion is moved at Town Meeting.
Thank you.
That is why the answer to the questions as to what the various alternative is-
It's important in order to put this motion forward.
That's why I have been asking for that answer for over a month now.
Right.
And because we knew we were coming to this crossroads as to the various options that could play out on this.
And to that point, Bruce, you said that in Article 71, it's my understanding, that Town Meeting vote supersedes everything. Therefore, if, for example, Town Meeting votes no on lights, 50% plus one, that means that the school committee would not be allowed to put lights on the school field because that was the vote of Town Meeting without coming to Town Meeting for another? How does that work?
That'd be my understanding. I'll confirm it with Council.
Would you, now Dover?
No, Dover is a zoning bylaw, not a, not an authority bylaw. So zoning permits, zoning, Dover, and in this case Dover happened or didn't happen, didn't matter. They didn't have to invoke it as a school. They're entitled to use its provisions. And they, and they did. They got the- its provisions, and they, and they did, they got the abbreviated, and I know it didn't seem like it, an abbreviated version of the planning board hearing process, and that's how it played out. That's the only thing Dover does, it doesn't fund it, and it doesn't, and it doesn't authorize it, so.
Well, it'd be very helpful for the people that are asking if I knew the answer to those facts. Thank you very much.
Well, we'll get to work on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do you have anything else from me?
Do you have an article to give to council?
Not right on my...
Soon. Very soon.
Give me my answers, please, and then I will give you your answers. I don't, it's sort of hard to do it without knowing where we stand on how things are being voted, and, you know, the procedure. So if we knew the procedural things, then it's, makes it much easier to write an article that can be voted.
The other thing I'd ask you to do is get confirmation if the person or persons who are gonna contribute the money for the turf field are willing to do it no matter what.
I don't even know who the people are that are contributing the money for the turf field, so I don't know how that's possible for me to do. I, I leave it as, it would be my hope that anybody, you know, this is for the children. We are, you know, so that any money that is raised, it's being sent to John Ferris, that that money being raised by the school for the fields project would be for the children and the field project.
Thank you.
Okay, having laid out all of the various difficulties and provided no, a lot of heat and no light, I think I'm just gonna...
No pun intended.
Yeah, I think I'm just gonna suggest that we go ahead and offer our opinions on these articles as, as they are presented to us, and revisit the question with town council.
I think so, I think that's important, because how do we, we can't, the moderator needs to be able to give guidance to the public.
Oh, yeah.
And that's important. Before you move on, I have a statement I would like to read, because I think it's germane to the discussion, and I wanna thank some people, and I wanna give my thinking in public, because this has been a very long and deliberative process. So if you indulge me, I would like to do that. So some of you may have recently read in the Hingham Journal my March tenth comments to the advisory committee concerning the proposed fields project. While the letter at the time left town hall electronically okay, unfortunately, the advisory committee members did not receive it for their meeting on that issue that evening of March tenth. I did release it to the journal last week, so that people would know of my position in advance of any voting we might take this evening. After the advisory committee vote, but before last week, two leaders of the proposal by the schools, Jeff Taccio, one of the proponents' attorneys, and Carol Falvey, the chair of the school committee, reached out to me personally, and to the author of the petitioner's article, to see if we could find common ground. I met with them on Friday, March twenty-second, and again with the author and me in attendance on Sunday, March twenty-first, March twenty-fourth. I applaud their efforts, and I thank them personally for having the courtesy of meeting with us. Their effort was an opportunity to respond to a suggestion from a citizen who also wrote a letter in the journal, to encourage some dialogue between the opposing sides on this all-important issue, what is needed for the schools, but is also disruptive to some citizens of the town. Unfortunately, we could not resolve our different views on the size and scope of the proposals before the town meeting, but it certainly was not because we all did not try. As I said in my letter, I think we all agree that the fields need fixing. Others and I voted to fund that study to improve the playing conditions of the high school. The growing interest in sports activity here in Hingham prompted me to support the Margates Field proposal at an earlier town meeting, which also included lights in a neighborhood. I thought then, that location was less intrusive and disruptive to a town that had opposed lights in its past. The vote on Margates Field, needing a two-thirds approval, failed because of neighborhood concerns. I respected that vote then, but I also learned that we have to be careful in how Hingham proceeds with plans that have a direct rip impact on any neighborhood, with emphasis on any. I had encouraged the school committee to take the project in stages. First, let's fix the fields, and yes, I am okay with turf fields. Second, I suggested holding off on lights until we could get a sense of the usage of the new fields, and do a thorough vetting of the lights with the neighbors. Some discussions have taken place, but at least in some neighbors' view, not enough of a real compromise. The split planning board, the negative vote of the historic district commission, and the split among the advisory committee tell me the negative impacts have not been resolved. Unfortunately, what I feared would happen has happened, we have a divided town. Instead of uniting us in a stepped approach to a solution that would assess the impact in stages, we have in the first article of the school proponents, a total solution based on assumptions which may or may not hold true. I just look at the drainage issue, the more we look at it, the more it costs. We were told that the total cost of the fix for the fields would be two-point-seven million dollars back then. While final costs now await formal bids from contractors, we are told now that the total cost would be about four-point-two million dollars. Yes, that will be offset by some private donations, but at the moment, the cost to the taxpayer is still three-point-six million dollars, as I understand it, much higher than we were originally told. That's what happened to us once, already happened unfortunately in the middle school project, where the original estimates escalated by almost ten million dollars, from the fifty million we were told, to over sixty at the, at the end, and then subsequently revised downward to fifty-eight. You will recall that I supported the proposal for the middle school. Fool me once, shame on me. Fool me twice, shame on you. If we approve this school proposal, we will increase traffic and parking, not just in the daytime, which is understandable and acceptable to many of the neighbors. Today, there are no night games, tomorrow, there would be at least sixty-two, as I understand it. That is a significant change to a lifestyle for many of our citizens, and they will be at night. I believe the planning board recognized the impact in its decision, a three-to-two split decision, when it imposed usage limits. That split decision is reflective of other opinions expressing serious reservations, not over the fixing of the fields, which are needed, but over the size and cost of the fix. And the impact of this on Hingham is yet to be determined, because the planning board guidelines will be subject to further review and discussion in our future. For some, from some, I have already heard that we need to rent this new field, presumably at night, to generate more money, which will only generate more usage. I do not think this is what we intended when we authorized the study. Yes, we do need a solution to our high school fields complex, and we do need a long-term plan to fix not only for the Title IX conditions, but also to provide playing surfaces for so many others of our citizens who have expressed a need for sports activities. But we need to be mindful of the costs and the impact on the lifestyle of all of our citizens, so that we all benefit. That is, after all, why we moved here. I cannot support the school proposal as it stands now. Thank you.
Before we move to vote, any other comments, questions from the room? Okay, I will, on the petition article now, I'll entertain a motion for what we might recommend at town meeting related to the petition article, if anybody would like to offer one.
Shall we take what the advisory committee did?
I'll make a motion on no action on the petition article.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, moving on to the school committee's three articles, we'll consider the first one first, and we've had long and extensive discussions about it. Any further comments? Any further comments?
Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Falvey.
Carol Falvey, Chair of School Committee. First, I'd like to say, Bruce, I'm very disappointed in you. At the special town meeting, eighty-seven percent of the town showed up and voted for the funding of this proposal. Eighty-seven percent of the people that showed up and voted for it knew that a proposal would be coming down the road, and would be expecting a project from us. Our project was vetted over eighteen months, over fifty public meetings, with many people in attendance. The drainage solution is solved, and I think I was pretty clear on that. It's solved, and it took a lot of money to solve it. The reason the price went up from two-point-seven-five million dollars up to where it's gonna be, we haven't gotten all our bids in, is because, A, we listened to the neighbors and mitigated all the parking and traffic issues to the tune of over seven-hundred thousand dollars. B, we put in the best PA system that we could afford to mitigate the sound. The lights are taller, they're more expensive, to mitigate the spillage of the noise. This project has been vetted and well-thought-out, and it's due to the thoughtfulness of the school committee and the ad hoc committee to the neighbors. So what I'd like to remind everybody before you take your vote, is that we've had eighteen months to vet this project, it's been discussed, it's been debated, the historical committee had no, were not in their district. So they had, they have no jurisdiction over this. And I would ask that you support this project as it's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm aware of the reasons that, that you described, why the cost has gone up, a number of the problems that were being solved. Ultimately, in this process, don't, didn't actually relate to the project of the fields, but requests from the police department, requests from neighbors, to mitigate some of the impacts, and that had a lot to do with the, with the increased cost. But it is also true that, that in the, when, when we make estimates relative to the middle school, relative to this project, an estimate is an estimate. And sometimes I wanna say, what part of estimate don't we understand? Because you can't know in advance what something's going to cost. And so to say, well, you didn't hit your estimate, it's sort of like, we should've known that from day one, that we were not gonna hit the estimate. And I have a lot of confidence, as I said, in the process that brought forward this, this proposal of the school committees, because I feel that there's been a great deal of public discussion, and I have never yet seen an article, a project of this size, on which every person in town could unite. It's, it's, we're all different people, we all have different relationships to it, it's not to be expected. And so I, I do support this, this article and this project. So nobody else has any more comments?
I have one more comment. One of the things that has bothered me about the project, once all the costs came in, is the total cost and the impact on the taxpayers, the elderly that are on fixed incomes, and the young people that are just barely making it, especially with the tax increases ahead. I still support the project, we need it, this isn't gonna give us all the fields we need. I'm hoping when we get done with the master plan, we will have clarity, or more clarity, on what we do need. So what I am gonna ask, and do it publicly, is, Andy, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I had asked Ted Alexiades to clarify with council naming opportunities, and Ray said that's already being done. So Andy, I'm gonna ask you, please go out and raise as much money as you possibly can, and use our naming bylaw to maybe happily shame some people, to write big checks, because I am very concerned about the taxpayer impact on this. But I still think we need it.
Well, I think, yes, yeah, just a second. I just wanted to respond to something you said. I feel sure that the school committee and all their supporters are working as hard as they possibly can to raise money, and I think naming opportunities is a, is a great approach as well. I don't know how that works with our bylaw, I'm sure somebody will figure it out.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted council to give us...
Somebody will figure it out.
Yes.
Yeah. I just, but I just do wanna make it clear, make sure that people understand that this project, as put forward and as the funding is proposed, will not have any effect on, will not change the tax rate, whatever, or the rate at which people are taxed, whether it's passed or not, that's not going to make a difference. Because of the prudent fiscal management that we have been engaging in, in this town over decades, we have the ability to, to carry the cost of this project without, without raising taxes specifically in order to do that. It is true that when you make a decision to do something within your existing budget, you're making a decision to do that as opposed to something else. And, and that, that is a decision that we're making, a decision that I think is, is appropriate. So, but I, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that this project is not going to raise your taxes if you vote for it. So, yes, Ms. Eldridge?
Elizabeth Eldridge, one fifty-four Union Street. I just wanted to ask, as far as the Dover amendment, that, I guess it didn't have to be invoked, because it's just there, or whatever, the schools are basically, my understanding, and I guess if town meeting permits them, are allowed to have the lights, put on all their games, do whatever they wanted, which was something that the neighbors did agree to in terms of one of their compromises. But then there was the fact that then they went beyond that, in terms of the usage for community people. And what I wanted to find out is, that usage policy that was done with the planning board and the ad hoc committee, there were several people on the ad hoc committee who are board members of the Hingham Sports Partnership. And is that any kind of conflict of interest?
Are you speaking to the conflict of interest law as it exists?
Right, and the fact that these are board members from Hingham Sports Partnership, trying to promote the use of the youth sports on this field, is that, is that a conflict of interest at all?
So far, up to this moment, over the course of the last decade or so, the town in its wisdom has not chosen to elect lawyers to the Board of Selectmen. So I always have to pass these questions off to town council, and let them...
We'll ask town council.
Yeah. I mean, I, I do know, because we do have to pay attention to what the ethics law are, and we, we have to try to understand it so we can observe it ourselves, and in general, it's a question of whether someone has a personal financial interest in what goes on. It's actually a fairly narrow, narrow point of concern.
And personally profits.
Yeah.
And they would certainly...
As relates to the conflict of interest law itself.
I filled out something for the advisory committee, and CTC, and any member of historical societies, with other people, and I just, we build out things, and I was wondering, I don't think anybody filled out anything on the ad hoc committee.
Well, we'll pass that off to the lawyers that we hire, because we aren't lawyers. Okay, any other, yes, Mr. Schafter?
Andy Schafter, thirty-two Middle Street, also I am the school committee liaison to private fundraising. I don't know if Dr. Eldridge was asking, the primary fundraiser is not Hingham Sports Partnership. So if that's where she's talking about a conflict of interest, they may be one of the people donating to this project, but the project right now, that the people are stepping forward, are individuals from the town of Hingham. There was a community collective group that got together that threw, that threw the Big Green Party, but so I didn't know if that was the specific question to that, but so I just wanted to address it. As always, you know, we're very fortunate here in Hingham to have so many people dedicated to everything we do. We have countless of volunteers, we have countless of elected officials here who put all this time and effort in. But just so in case it is a conflict, they, they're just one group, and when anyone, since I was one of the people who chose the people for the ad hoc committee, you know, we had a very diverse group. We had people who were abutters, so, not to turn it back to Dr. Eldridge, but does that make them a conflict of interest, since they're abutters? Then we had people at large, and then we also had, you know, sports parents. And so it just happened to be, the people just wear different hats, so, just a clarification.
I was just asking, in terms of the user policy, promoting that, and promoting the school...
Okay.
Not the, on reading.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on this? Well, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation.
Anyway, we're not gonna read the... Anyway, we're not going to read the whole...
No, just recommend the article.
I think we know what they are.
Okay, I'll move...
Perhaps endorse the advisory committee's decision, because the advisory committee did support this article.
Okay.
Mr. Pelissero?
Warren Pelissero, 147 Main Street. Thank you for inviting me here to talk. Number one, the Hingham Sports Partnership is a 501(c)(3) organization, nonprofit organization. So I don't know what is attempting to be brought to bear. It's just, we're lucky to have people that know a lot about the functional aspects of sports in the town that happen to be board members of our organization. So they were very, very helpful during the process. In talking about the usage policy, as you know, we went to eighty-three towns, and two had usage policies. Of those two, our usage policy is the strictest, as you know. So that, I mean, clearly tells you that there were tremendous efforts to negotiate along the way. And I guess the last thing I'd like to say is, when you do vote on this, remember that you're voting on the transparency of the process. You, Bruce, asked us to be transparent upfront, and I believe over thirty meetings publicly, a couple of which you did attend, so, you know, I think you did see that transparent process, which I think you would promote during any sort of project that goes on during this town. I would take a look at the transparency of this article that we're talking about, and the lack of transparency of the opposition's article. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh.
Or try to.
Bruce, are you?
Nope.
Okay. Let me try this. I move that we follow the recommendation of the advisory committee for Article Y, School Fields, number one, which is the description of the project.
It's actually, it's actually Article eight in the law, so maybe that's...
Scratch that, School Fields, number one, Article eight.
Okay.
Are you moving favorable action?
Yes.
We recommend favorable action.
Recommend favorable action on Article eight.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The next article is about turf.
What number is that?
And that one is short enough to read.
Oh, thank goodness.
So it's Article nine, you want to read it?
Yes.
Okay.
"Will the town raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended under the direction," oh, I should be, excuse me, "that the town appropriate a sum not to exceed four hundred and fifty-four thousand twenty dollars to be expended under the direction of the school committee to fund the installation of a turf field or similar artificial surface as part of the construction of a new multipurpose playing field, MPF, in connection with Phase Two of the High School Field Improvement Project. To meet said appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said sum, under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, or any other enabling authority, upon such terms as the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen shall determine."
Okay.
Second.
So, oh, was that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah. Any comments, any thoughts? No. Well, I will just, I'll offer some thoughts, that my reason for supporting this article is that I think that the, that I consider that, the reason I think the town should fund this, if necessary, of course, I always hope that some white knights will step forward and provide as much help as they can, but I feel that a turf field, at this point, is a need for the town, not a want, in terms of our sports programs. Most towns, if they do not have turf fields, are headed in that direction, and if we wait and if we do not put in a turf field during this round of improvements, we're very likely to find ourselves as the last town in all of our leagues not to have a turf field. So that is the reason I think that the town should spend the money for a turf field for this project.
Let me also add to what Laura said. The cost that many people don't really recognize is, we're already paying money to truck our kids out of town to practice on turf fields, when they do make championship rounds, or when they're playing really important games. So they get the experience, and they're ready to play against teams who play on nothing but turf fields. Shall I read it?
You just read it.
You read it.
No, no, ten. Oh, I did, oh, never mind, never mind.
I seconded it.
We'll do ten.
I seconded it.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And finally, the last article, which, as Town Administrator pointed out, is somewhat separable from the other ones, in the sense that even if all these other three articles failed, Town Meeting could still vote to put lights on the high school fields, I suppose. So that could, that, somebody's laughing, but that could happen. So this one article, in some sense, is not really dependent on the other three, in terms of those sixteen combinations. So do you want to, would you like to read the recommendation of the advisory committee?
I would love to. So I move, we approve the recommendation of the advisory committee as follows: "That the town allow the erection and installation of four eighty-foot-high light poles at designated locations identified on the design plans for the multipurpose playing field, MPF, intended to be constructed at the high school in connection with the High School Fields Improvement Project, under the direction and control of the school committee, in Peren's SC."
Thank you. Okay, comments?
I made mine.
Any comments from the public? I realize that this is something that, that people of goodwill can disagree on. I have reviewed the presentation on the lights that are being proposed, and I think that the impact on the neighborhood is not going to be as bad as people think. And I support this article. So, would you like to make a motion? Anybody like to make?
You did.
That was a motion. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. And that brings us then to the reserve fund transfer?
Yep.
We're not going to do that this evening? Okay, fine. Would you, would anybody like to propose an appointment?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we appoint Gregory Lane to the Hingham Development and Industrial Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we are up to Selectmen and Town Administrator reports.
We have...
Selectmen, any Town Administrator reports?
Not that I haven't discussed with you already.
Okay.
The only thing to report is, the Audit Committee had its inaugural meeting for this year's audit plan, and they've laid that out, started to lay it out, I should say, and then that will be, they'll be coming before us shortly. And what I wanted to put forth is that there has been a change in the committee membership. George Alexikos has stepped down as chairman, and he steps down with our thanks for his good service. And Ed Gillis has been elected the new chairman of the Audit Committee, and Jason Ryan will be continuing his role as secretary. So that is what I have to say.
The Cushing and Main Traffic Study Committee had our second meeting this week, and we are going through all of the Kohler and Colantonio studies again, and reviewing the traffic statistics. The next meeting will be an open meeting, where we're going to invite everyone who would like to discuss it, and especially the people that have taken time to send ideas, and there have been a number of ideas, that we would like the proponents of those ideas to come and talk to the committee. So Jim Costello was unanimously elected chair, and has a really good committee, it really is. So, and I invite everybody to come to that meeting when it is published.
You have a date?
I don't, truthfully, I don't remember.
So just stand and wait.
Yes. Carol, I'll call you tomorrow with the date.
Well, I would just like to report that on Tuesday, the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust closed on the sale of the eighty Beale Street property to Craftsman, and that project is underway, and that brings to a close the trust's direct involvement in that project, although we expect to be consulting as time goes by with Craftsman, if anything comes up. I happened to be perusing the real estate, I can't even remember why, the listings, and found that the units are already up.
Seriously?
Yeah, for sale. They expect to sell these really fast, they expect to be done by the end of the summer. So I encourage anybody who is looking for a really cute home...
How much, for the market rate?
Well, I was astonished. Our pro forma, the Housing Trust pro forma, was calling for selling these fourteen hundred unit, square foot units, little homes, cottages, in a condo development for five hundred thousand dollars. I was pretty dubious. They're on the mark, they put them up for seven thirty, six thirty, six twenty-nine, I think.
Yeah, how many, how many affordable units?
There are two affordable units, and the...
One thirty-eight, was it?
Yeah, I cannot remember the price of the affordable units.
It was one thirty-eight, if I remember.
The other six units were intended by being limited to, by their condominium agreement, to fourteen hundred square feet, so that they would not ever be torn down and replaced with something larger or added on to. They were intended to be all with small homes, providing, even though they're not on the affordable housing inventory, to fill in a housing product that's disappearing from Hingham. But we had blind hopes that they would not cost that much money. So that, these are market forces that we're up against, and that's just, that's just the way it is. The good news is that this is a 40B project, and so the developer, if they make over a certain, if they make over eighteen percent profit, I think, is required to turn over all the rest of the profit to the town, so...
Is that right?
Yeah, so if they make a lot of money, we'll, or some portion, I can't remember, is all of it or some of it?
I can't remember.
Pardon me? Does the extra money go? Where's that money go, and gets handed over to the town?
It comes to the town.
The general fund.
Just the general fund, yep. Where Town Meeting could, if it wished, I suppose, would, you know, appropriate it back for affordable housing, to the Affordable Housing Trust, to help with future projects, that's the thing it could do.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah. So, that's very exciting for me, it is. And we have a couple more votes before we're done for the evening.
Okay. As you all may recall, we had decided to have a Fire Department Asset Review Committee, and when we had the discussion on the capital program, to look at the Fire Department, and we have some proposed members, which I'd like to solicit for your approval, and I'd like to make the motion to appoint the following members of the Fire Department Asset Review Committee: Chief Mark Duff, Captain Robert Keys, Lieutenant William McIntyre, Carl Peterson, Al Carney, Tom Carey, and a Selectman appointee whom I think should be the chair.
I agree, I would like to, since the chair is the Fire Department liaison...
Done, that would be consistent, so...
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And one more. We have an issue that requires disciplinary action, and I would propose that we appoint Town Administrator Ted Alexiades as the hearing officer for an upcoming police disciplinary hearing.
Any discussion?
I don't agree with this. I, this is very serious. Anytime any of our public safety first responders, or any town employee, is up for a disciplinary hearing, I think it should be the full Board of Selectmen. We are the ultimate higher fire, and I think we need to hear the testimony in this particular hearing. I think delegating it to someone as capable as the Town Administrator does not provide the full and complete support to Chief Poreno and Deputy Chief Olson, so I am not in favor of this at all.
I had discussion with the chief.
I did too.
And, in fact, I had two discussions, with two different opinions, because the question on the table was, I think, Irma, you're raising an excellent point, and the question is, is, we are the appointing authority for all police officers, unlike the other employees. We are not the appointing authorities for those, and we are not the appointing authorities for the Fire Department. So the disciplinary procedure is either the Board of Selectmen, as you point out, or, under the new state interpretation, it can be delegated to the Town Administrator and/or Town Manager, and that's per Town Council's guidance. So it's only unique in the police arena, and I discussed this with the chief at 5:15, and he was okay with it.
Well, I'll second this motion. The, the legal document, I can't, what was it, was it the statute, or civil service, or, if the civil service regulation states that we can, that Board of Selectmen can delegate this role to anyone that the Board of Selectmen chooses?
And my understanding is other towns...
Not just the Town Administrator, and that most towns actually do. So this is, I agree, this is a bit different from what we've done in the past, but I have a hundred percent confidence in the Town Administrator, and if it, it is a very serious issue, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. But I think this is actually a good way to deal with it, because it reinforces the chain of command in the town. So, any other comments before we take a vote?
I think it does.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, I think that is the end of our agenda for the public session. Yes, Mr. Shafter?
Are you about to go to the executive session?
We are.
Andy Shafter, 32 Middle Street. Is this executive session concerning the eighteen acres for the water treatment facility?
I don't think so.
Is this Article 22?
No.
Oh, okay. Can I just ask a question about Article 22?
Sure.
Article 22 is about the water treatment.
Yes.
That's correct.
So, I guess, here's my confusion on this whole thing, is when I was reading the warrant, it says, "The advisory committee has not voted," and again, I don't know what the final answer is, but we're going to learn about this at Town Meeting. We talked earlier tonight about the Fields project, how it's been eighteen months, thirty meetings. This, interestingly enough, happens to be almost the same price, three point seven five billion. It's not going to impact the taxes, because it's part of their tax rate. But, just me personally, and I consider myself a person who stays pretty well on top of the issues in town, I have no idea why we're buying eighteen acres for four acre, when we need a four acre thing. What are we doing with the other fourteen acres? The way I look at town, this is actually across the street, we'd have to go through Route Three to get over there, which I could be wrong. There's just so many questions, I don't really know what's going on, that, that again, I don't know, this could probably be the best thing since sliced bread, but one thing is, when you're talking about three point seven five million, I'm not advocating for another, like a special town meeting, but when the cost, when I've talked to our town clerk, Eileen McCracken, she says between ten and fifteen thousand. I don't want, I'm not advocating to just spend ten to fifteen thousand dollars, but when we're talking about something almost four million dollars, ten to fifteen thousand dollars is less impactful to make sure we make the right decision. So I'm really concerned that, we talked about the other project, we've had all these meetings, all the boards have weighed in, and now the warrant's been published, we have no comment, and we're going to make a decision on this? It's just, again, you might know everything, but I consider myself a person who follows a lot of the issues, and I have no idea what this thing is actually doing.
Absolutely, I mean, and what you say is always a real concern, when things pop up at the last minute at Town Meeting, there's always a big concern whether or not people are going to be prepared with all the information they need to have to make a decision. So, but the advisory committee will be discussing this fully, and it'll be reported in the paper, and...
Monday night.
Monday night is the meeting, in case you want to add another meeting to your, to your life.
You don't have a nothing.
That you wouldn't want to do that, but I do understand your frustration.
There was a rumor, and let me get to the nub, there was a rumor that perhaps this might be an alternative to the Fields project, and...
I've heard that rumor too.
Yeah, and I appreciate your question. That is not, we said when, in the proposal that we voted on, we didn't do an RFP, because this was a unique opportunity for economic development, and that's, that's its intent. The person we interviewed for the HDIC is one of those people we're going to be asking to, how could we develop, in addition to the water treatment plant, which we need for, for the South Shore, for the South Hingham Development, we need to understand what should, what could go there, because... Because the 18.6 acres is not, it can be covered, but some of it is not, if you will, completely usable. So, it's about eight acres, 8.6 acres that is usable. So that's what has to be explored, but it, the initial purpose is to develop a water treatment plant that is necessary for that end of town, and including, you know, the Derby Shops and the South Shore Industrial Park.
Just on that follow-up note, Bruce, you've always been a big advocate for having multiple choices. So like when I read, like the way I understood it, and I could be completely wrong, the cost is 3.75 million. Avalon Bay paid practically 2.7 or 2.75, maybe put like a million dollars worth of research in, so that's where the 3.75 came from. That's what I heard through the grapevine, don't know if it's true. But I don't know what actually four acres costs us in the industrial park. I'd love to know that cost. And then also, when you just said that we don't know exactly what the other, if we're using four, what the other 14 acres are, or the other four acres, because it's available, again, I strongly, just from where I sit, from the peanut gallery here, I'm not saying this is not a bad decision, and it might be a cure-all for everyone, because we have neighbors up there, stuff like that. I strongly think this is something that should not be, you know, done at Town Meeting, and maybe put off, I don't know how far you can put off, but you know, a special town meeting.
You can't.
You can't put off.
That's the problem.
It's a take it now or not take it.
Take it now or not take it at all.
So we don't, we really don't like to present things like this to Town Meeting in this way, for all the reasons that you very ably laid out. It is not a great idea, and if Town Meeting is not sure and uncertain, then we won't, we won't, we won't pick up this, we won't pick up on this opportunity if, if we can't make the case adequately, it just won't happen.
And what, you mentioned rumors, the other rumor I heard is one reason why this was a motivation to buy this land, was we didn't want the housing project, project up there, because of the impact of the schools. I don't know if that's true or not, but I am on the school committee, and no one's come in front of me or handed me a document, telling me what the impact of the schools was. So there's another rumor out there, you don't have to comment, but if there was a circulation on impact...
No, this was an economic, we, this, this board made a decision, the prior board, and reinforced in this instance, made a decision to bring two things to South Hingham in that area. One was water, and one was sewer. We have actively engaged with, and I'm, as you know, the liaison with the Aquarian Water Company, and we've actively discussed with them, and in fact, there is a proposal being discussed as we speak, between their vice president and our town engineer, as to how we could proceed with getting water into the area. And this wastewater treatment plant is the other half of the equation that we need to help that area develop, for economic purposes, which means taxes.
Right. Well, again, I appreciate your time, it just, it seems like a big thing to be understanding 14 days or 18 days.
You are absolutely right. We're going to do our best, but you're so right.
Something, you're right, Andy.
Great, thank you.
It started, by the way, this was, took seven months to negotiate.
Again, I'm not saying it's not the right decision, there's just so many balls up in the air, that, and when you just mentioned Aquarian, you know, I don't even know, you know, we, we're still, there's still talk, we voted at last Town Meeting about a feasibility study to see if we want to buy the water company. And I'm not an expert on the water company, so I don't know if this is tied into that, directly tied indirectly, and so there's so many...
It's actually not.
Okay, but again, there's so many...
I can answer that question.
Yeah, but the thing is, when people go to Town Meeting, and everyone picks up snippets.
Yeah.
And the snippet was, oh, we're going to buy the water company. Oh, so is this water treatment facility a part of that?
Yeah.
You know, so that's, there's so much confusion. You think there's confusion on the Fields issue? There's just as equal much confusion on that.
No question.
Okay, we'll do our best.
We'll do our best, and there will be a, there will not be a proposal for Town Meeting on the water company, but there will be a, a prepared update, which they're reviewing for a discussion next week, so...
The, the committee will have a report to Town Meeting on where they are.
They will have a report on where they're at, and what they've done, and what they found, and where are we?
Unless there's something else, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.